Good evening. At 7 o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Someone wish to take the role?
Let's see. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
And the other two are absent.
All right. We ask if you're able, please stand, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States Senator and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or with changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-abatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, or remove anything that they feel is necessary. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion as except the meeting as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Our first regular agenda item is a public hearing for Westlake Shopping Center expansion at 119, 209, and 289, 12th Street Southwest. This is a recommendation of preliminary planned unit development and consideration of Resolution Number 01-24-24-01, site plan approval. The way this worked this evening, the staff will present the application as they understand it. The commissioners will then ask any clarification questions that they may have. After that, we will ask the developer, if the applicant, if they'd like to say any words to come up, and we may have questions for the developer. After that, we will have the public hearing, and I'll give some further direction at that point. We will invite all of the public who wishes to speak to this application to do so. After the public hearing, it'll come back to the Planning Commission for decisions and motions. So with that, I believe Ken, you're presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. As you introduced, the applications for this item this evening are for a preliminary planned unit development, site plan review and approval for the Westlake Shopping Center. The location map is on the screen. Includes the Office Max and Aldi. It's on the east side, excuse me, 12th Street Southwest. Specifically, the applicant is looking to add, let me find the right map here, at a new retail store, or building, I should say, at the north end of the shopping center. Be about 9,600 square feet. Include about 50 parking, off-street parking spaces here. The northern tool is down to the south here. The future Mr. Car Wash on Broadway, this is the south end of that site. So right now, this is a green space area that's, well, a green space, and now they want to develop it with the plan that's on the screen. This is the building, Stormwater Pond parking area. This project requires approval, again, of a preliminary and final PUD for the entire shopping center, and then the site and design approval for this site specific. The entire shopping center and most of this area is Zone B2, which is our highway business zoning district. Commercial and retail businesses are permitted uses there, so this fits in with that. As far as the PUD, I'm going to find another map for the commission here. So this shows the entire shopping center, including, again, the development sites at the north end and what's now the green space area. The applicant's requesting a PUD approval from the city for two items. First of all, just to point out, the shopping center now is on three separate parcels. This north one, there's a smaller one here in the center, and then this southern one. All under the same ownership, but yet three separate parcels. The city code requires that if a commercial property is going to have a second building on the same lot, that requires approval of a PUD. So that's one request. As part of this, the applicant is asking to change and reduce the amount of impervious surface on the area, surface area within the entire shopping center. It's now at about 80 percent because there's this large green space area. They clearly want to develop this, remove some of the green space, and they will be adding or proposing to add other landscape features within the site. As proposed, the impervious surface area would jump to 83.4 percent. So that waiver, if you will, is another request of the PUD. Code outlines the reasons we even allow or consider PUDs, and they are in part to permit a more creative and flexible regulatory process in guiding land development. And for the two reasons I stated, that's, again, why the PUD application is before you. And we'll get into some findings and reasons for those in a bit. The buildings itself, I'll find the, there we go, the proposed building is set up, again, for up to five tenants, as I understand it. That, and how it gets subdivided, if it gets subdivided, is really up to the owner and their ability to lease space within the building, and that's an ongoing process, as I understand it. The, back to the site plan, then. The setbacks as proposed, and all the parking requirement setbacks and access meet all our city code standards. They are proposing to share a future driveway that would be, that was originally approved for the Mr. Car Wash development. They would be able to, the driveway was going to come here and connect into the shopping center, and in fact, these, the owners of the shopping center granted the easement area here to the developers of Mr. Car Wash, and now they want to use that driveway in part for access here to their new facility, and a driveway here. As I stated too, the impervious surface as proposed will increase to 83.4 percent, and I'll show some of the landscape features that are proposed to help accommodate that. Let's see if we can get, so here's a pretty good image. It's a little small. So where the new landscape areas are proposed are many of them right in front of the buildings here, to take out some of the hard surface and add various pockets of landscaping, additional landscaping along the main entrance driveway, some out here at the corner, and then, again, some down here. And again, the total impervious jumps from 80 percent to 83.4 percent with this proposal. The landscaping overall initially was a concern, but since the original neighborhood meeting, the applicant has made some revisions to the plan, and this revised plan that's on the screen is what's addressed in the report. They are proposing to plant enough trees within the development site. They are required to have 38, and this plan is showing 39. And in addition, they are proposing, again, as part of the overall PUD, to add landscaping in front of the buildings, and as well establish a row of pine trees of either blue spruce or black hill spruce in this area to help screen and buffer the residential homes from the rear of the shopping center, where at the neighborhood meeting, we were, it was brought to our attention that there's noise and light that sometimes could be disturbing to the neighbors. So that's a new addition since the neighborhood meeting to help try to address those concerns, and it adds more trees to the site, overall site as well. They have submitted a overall lighting plan that meets, again, for the new site, meets the requirements of the city code as far as foot candles and those items, and height of poles. We did get one complaint noted at the neighborhood meeting about a light on the back of the building, and as I understand, the owner has been working with the property manager to correct that light, so hopefully it will no longer be an issue. They are proposing to add signage. Again, if we go back to the elevations, the plan shows that each tenant, if there are five tenants, could have their own wall sign, and in addition, they are proposing to change this monument sign that's out on 12th. This is what it looks like now. They would add a larger monument sign similar to the one that's existing, and be consistent with the design of those two, with the existing. So replacing this one with a more up-to-date sign that's consistent with the existing sign. One of the challenges that came up with this review in the plan is the city is planning to someday eventually, it's known that 12th Street is going to need reconstruction. The final design and how that's going to lay out, what elements, are there more traffic signals, are there roundabouts, are there more trails, none of that's known for sure. However, there is a sidewalk along 12th, and part of that sidewalk gets out of the city right away and gets into an easement area here by the driveway. And staff is proposing, as a condition, as part of this PUD approval, that the developer or owner grant to the city a 15-foot wide public easement along, this is actually Third Avenue, not 12th Street, that needs to be corrected, along here and all along 12th Street. Now, there is already a 10-foot wide easement in there, in that location, for drainage utilities, so what we're asking for is really another five feet of easement area, especially to better accommodate the sidewalk that's here and future utility needs. I expect that when, if and when 12th Street gets reconstructed, however that happens, if it's turn lanes, roundabouts, there will need to be right-of-way actually dedicated for that project, but we're not there yet. City's not ready to do that, so this is what I would call a preliminary step towards that need. The building design itself, as I showed in this first image, is a mix of architectural elements and materials. All meet our standards and our city code, and really no issues with the building design itself. The city has reached out to our other agencies and partners that we rely on for comments. The Forest Lake, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Watershed District has given this project preliminary conditional approval, and they will, the applicant will need to get their final approval from them. Our engineering staff reviewed the plans, had some comments that I know the project engineer has been working on. That was part of the landscaping that I showed you, amongst some other things. And again, as with all projects, the city engineer will need to approve the final plans before construction actually starts. I touched on earlier that we had a neighborhood meeting. That was two weeks ago tonight here at City Hall on the 10th. We had one neighbor, nearby neighbor speak, come in, speak to the developer, express some concerns, which I outline on pages seven and eight of the report, including noise from the overnight and early morning activities at the rear of the center, again, in this corridor here. There's deliveries or garbage pickup. He's also concerned that this can be used, or has been used, as a cut-through in a lot of traffic, and potentially speeding activities and noise occurring there, people shortcutting instead of going out to 12th, whether it's northbound or southbound. Concern about vehicles coming down second into this cul-de-sac and then getting lost because they think they can get through to Walmart when they can't. Maybe they're doing that because they don't want to go down third, or they don't want to go down Broadway. Hard to know. But because of that, he's concerned that there's extra wear and tear on the street, and then second becomes less safe for pedestrians. Developer, again, was at the meeting, noted his comments, and I'm sure he'll address what they've been working on in the meantime, or since then, to help address those comments. Again, the additional landscaping was proposed as a, one element to help address the light and noise in this area. As you indicated, Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing, and we dotified all the property owners within 350 feet, so there's some here that I believe will want to speak tonight. Page eight of your report then has several criteria the city uses, nine in fact, for considering approval of a PUD. I am not going to read all those for you, but in summary, with the changes that they are proposing, and with the needs or expectations of the city, it's staff's opinion that this does meet the, this project does meet the criteria for approving a PUD. And likewise, on page nine, 10, or page nine, I should say, of our report, there are standard site plan considerations for approval in our code. And in summary, this proposal, again, back to the north end for this, for the new building, I should say, at the north end, and for the changes to the shopping center overall, it does meet our requirements for site plan approval with several conditions of approval. That's, so the staff findings in summary is really that we are supportive of the project as a staff. We are recommending approval, both preliminary PUD and the site plan and design plans. This project will meet one of the goals in our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which states, ensure the city's aesthetic character is enhanced through the beautification of its infrastructure and property, and again, by changing or adding landscaping at the rear and the front of the existing shopping center as part of this project, I think is a great step to improving the aesthetic. So in summary, with the proper conditions and requirements of the city, we're confident the development will conform with the plan's policies and standards that we have for the city of Forest Lake Development. So we have two recommendations for the commission this evening. First one is to recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary plan of development. Again, this starts at the bottom of page 10 of your report. That is subject to six Condition three, which is towards the top of page 11, the way I had written it was that the city shall require the applicant owner to provide the city with 15-foot wide public utility drainage roadway and pedestrian easements over and on the property adjacent to Third Avenue and 12th Street Southwest. That wasn't, we and the developer, the city and the developer, had talked about this through the process, and that wording didn't really reflect what the intent or the need of the city was, so I've got a slight change that we're suggesting, and this will probably, we'll make this change going forward, as some of the commission accept it. What we want to say is that the applicant order to provide the city with public utility drainage roadway and pedestrian easements up to 15 feet in width on the existing landscape boulevards adjacent to Third Avenue and 12th Street Southwest. There are some places where that green space along the road, I'm going to switch maps again, so we're talking along here and along here. There are some places where that green strip of land, landscape area, might only be 10 feet wide, and there's other places where it might be much wider. And so, and there's, again, existing 10-foot wide drainage and utility easement over both sides. What we're requesting as the staff are recommending is that that be bumped up to a maximum width of 15 feet, depending on the particular conditions, and that's something will take a little more design work and engineering work by the development team, but that then would cover all, the intent is to cover all the landscape areas to make sure there's room for underground utilities and for any pedestrian improvements that might occur in the future. So that's one change in the PUD conditions. And our second recommendation is Item B, which is a move to approve the Resolution 01242401. That's in the report. That's approving the site and design plans for the project, and that recommendation is subject to 26 conditions, which, again, are many of which are standard conditions for all our commercial development projects. We'll have to clarify anything about the easements, based on what I just spoke about. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary on those conditions unless you have particular condition, or question on any of those. So with that, I will stop and take questions from the commission.
Commissioners' questions?
I've got two. One, the cut-through from Broadway, especially to northern tool, is firmly entrenched and with many of us. That's going to be a unique experience, and I'm not sure how, how folks are going to react, or whether or not the developer plans to reduce the opportunities for that. That is a significant entrance, especially to northern tool, for a lot of folks in the Actually, I was glad to see that the city was finally looking out for its right-of-way and requiring the additional 15 feet. I was, I was, I thought that we had learned our lesson from Broadway, where when development occurred, we did not require enough right-of-way in return for PUD variances, and it cost the city dearly, very dearly. With a PUD, it was my understanding that the developer gets some things that they want from the city, and in return, the city gets some public benefits. You're going to need more than five feet of right-of-way, especially since the sidewalks there, recognizing the retail that is on Broadway, on 12th, whether it's Chipotle or any of the fast food restaurants, and the large number of dwellings and apartment buildings that are farther south on 12th. I've been doing a lot of sidewalk walking recently, and two people and a dog more than fill up a six-foot sidewalk. We have a lot of children. We will continue to have that, and so when that reconstruction is done, it's important that a sizable sidewalk be there. And so I was really happy to see the agreement that there would be an additional right-of-way preserved along 12th for future development. So my, my two main questions are dealing with the access off of Broadway, especially toward the northern end of that shopping center, and the right-of-way. I'm not as hard on additional right-of-way along Third as I am on 12th, which is already a challenging street. I think it's really, really wise to beef up the landscaping. This has been kind of an orphaned retail center that has a lot of potential, and there's, there's people that use this, but it has not been really inviting. And so I am hoping that you'll do a good job with your increased landscaping. How are we going to make sure that those landscaping on the parcel that is not part of the PUD are, are actually brought forward? Well, I guess that was three questions. I'm sorry.
I think I can answer the one why Ken's doing this. This PUD covers the entire site. It's not just the one parcel. So the landscaping in the middle there where Subway and Great Clips are, that's part of the PUD.
Okay. And I'm guessing improvements to those strip landscaping also by the entrance off of 12th?
Mr. Chair, Susan, all this landscaping, including the tree planting back here, additional tree planting, is part of the overall PUD. The PUD is the overall shopping center, and that will be written into whatever site improvement agreements or development agreements that are put forward.
Thank you.
As far as the access, I'll let the applicant speak to the north-south roadway, driveway.
Other questions? I have one. Ken, if you can go to the site, this one's all right, I think. You know, we have quite a decent-sized holding pond up here on the, on the new development.
Here.
And then underneath the parking lot, we have underground water storage.
Yeah.
That's a better picture. So one of the reasons that we like to hold our impervious is to retain water runoff on-site. How much besides just this site does this retention pond and underground do, or does it just handle the small building here?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's my understanding it's just for this site, but the project engineer is here, and I'm sure he'd love to answer this question in more detail.
I'm sure. Any other questions? Hearing none. Would the applicant like to step forward? We turfed a couple of questions to you, so we ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Brian Holder. My address is 8816 Six Forks Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. I am with Herkosh Realty Associates. I'm a principal with them, and we own the shopping center.
So you chose to do this in the middle of winter, and you're from North Carolina? Am I understanding this right?
They're getting snow, too.
Absolutely not, and my consultants will confirm that I complain every time. No, it's been absolutely fine. My wife's from central New York, so she's, she's, she's brought me into the fold. I'm from Miami, so that just, I just want to, that's bold, right? It's bold to be here, but no. You have a beautiful area. I'd actually, wish you had more snow right now. It'd be more beautiful to look at.
So I think we have a couple of questions for you. We'll start with the access along the residential area, the north-south there.
Sure.
We understand you have some ideas?
Well, the, the comments from the neighbor were that, that, excuse me, were that, that the, the area behind the shopping center was used as a cut-through because of various congestion issues that you have on Broadway, and so on and so forth. So what, what I proposed is that we could, because we don't want people cutting through anyway. It's private property, right? You know, and if something happens on their property, I get sued, and you know, so I want to keep people off that as a thoroughfare. If you're an invitee to my shopping center, come on in, but if you're just using it to cut through, obviously, I don't want you to do it. And candidly, it's illegal to cut through a parking lot to, you know, to, to cut between roads, so. But the practical thing unfortunately is limiting, in that we could, we could put signage up either, and also do potentially some striping on the, on the pavement, but put signage up, private property, not a thoroughfare, you know, don't, don't use this as a thoroughfare, basically, is what you're going to be able to do. Anything else in the, in the sort of the traffic calming arena, we're okay with it as long as it doesn't inherit or change the ability to service the shopping center. Servicing it means plowing it. Servicing it means, I got, you know, delivery trucks and things going back and forth, so I can't, I can't close it off. I can't, I can't narrow it, if you will, to a point that makes it inconvenient. So really, our approach to satisfying the neighbor comment was, hey, listen, we're going to put some signage up. We're going to keep our eyes on it. Our local, you know, if there are issues that are, we're remotely managing it. You know, we do, we have properties all over the country we do this with, and our tenants are good to stay on top of things and call if there's a problem, or so on and so forth. Just keep our tenants informed that if there is, continues to be an issue of people driving through, call the police. You know, do whatever it takes to, to keep, to keep that down, so people are complying with the signage. But the two-pronged approach was the signage and then the landscaping, which helped with, hopefully, limiting the amount of traffic that runs behind there, but also calming the noise between us and the neighborhood. Again, we're, we're looking at different types of options from a calming perspective, but it's challenging because of this, you know, because of snow and because of the large vehicles that do have to go back and large vehicles that do have to go back and forth to service the shopping center.
May I ask you?
Let me?
Yeah.
Good.
The removable speed bumps are fairly popular in residential alleys up here. They go in in spring when you don't have the plow anymore. They come out, and it's spring, summer, fall where you have the most speeding traffic.
That's a good point. We clearly could look into that. That's a good point. I did not know, again, I'm a Southerner. I didn't know that you had, you could put speed bumps down. I thought the only way to remove them was with the snowplow. So, awesome. We'll look into that.
Can you cover the holding pond?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, here's my, he, he can speak in numbers. I don't really speak real well in numbers, but yeah.
Yeah, so it's maybe...
Excuse me. Name and address, please, for the record.
Yep, Eric Loken Skard with Kimley Horn, 14-800 Galaxy Avenue, Apple Valley. So it's kind of deceiving looking at the plan. It looks like a big holding pond. It's, it is in the horizontal direction, but it's really only two or three feet deep from a depression standpoint. The, unfortunately, Department of Labor and Industry has had some recent stormwater rules and interpretations of their code and of the plumbing code that's come out, which has caused some angst for developing across the entire state, including making ponds larger and shallower. And so, you know, fortunately, there's space on site to include an above-a, a surface-grade pond, but there wasn't enough room, thus, the underground system that's on the, that's on the west side under the parking lot. So two-pronged approach, about half the site stormwater is served via the, the above-ground base, and the other half via the underground stormwater system.
And how do we exit the underground system?
So there's actually currently a storm sewer line that runs directly through the site today, and so it's part of the project, and it's, it's pretty detailed, but Ken, if, if you want to go like the grading plan, you can see the...
Is this it right here, Eric? Where I'm running the...
Yeah, yep. So it, it actually has to be realigned, and then the underground system and the above-ground system will both outlet directly into that, that pipe that's also connected with the rest of the shopping center and ultimately goes out to 12th Street, to the public system.
And that ends up over in Bixby when it's all said and done.
I was gonna say, are you gonna treat that before it discharges?
Yeah, so the pond and the underground system are both treatment measures, best management practices that have sand filters on the bottom, so the water filters through, it rains, it collects the water, water filters through the sand, treated per the MPCA and Comfort Lake Water District Standards, and then is discharged into the, into the underground storm sewer.
I just assumed that was the way it was. That's how I'm used to it, so. All right. Other questions, commissioners? Anything you'd like to add about the project? As long as you're up here.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I did fly up here for this. Absolutely. I mean, th, this gives me an opportunity, being able to utilize this, this parcel, gives me an opportunity to take what, what, what was really useless green space. It was back in the back. It looked, it looked, it looked like a developable lot anyway, and then take that and redistribute that in the front of my shopping center. And the entrance making it a main, the main thoroughfare into the shopping center, enhancing all of that. It's gonna be better for the tenants. I think it's, I think it's really better for the city from the standpoint of it's gonna, it's not gonna be an insignificant cost to, to do that enhancement, and otherwise, there would be no reason to do it, you know, from an economic standpoint. But this allows us to do it economically. I mean, just two seconds on Rivercrest. I mean, we've been around 60 years. We own assets into perpetuity. We don't buy them, build them, and then flip them. We hold them forever, if you will. We bought this property about six years ago, and when we bought it, we, we did not intend on developing this piece. We didn't even really think about it. But we had so much demand, people calling us finally beat me down, and I said, listen, let me go see if we can do something, and the city's been fantastic and offering up lots of options and solutions through the PUD process that would allow us to hopefully put a building on this, so, and I appreciate that. But I think it really is mutual for both, you know, I, I like win-wins. Win-wins is always good. So I think it's a win for me because I am a bill, I'm going to be able to build something that I didn't think I'd be able to build on, and I'm going to be able to improve the shopping center for long-term and, and work with you guys on some, some easements for your pedestrian access and things like that, so that's my goal.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do you have any possible anchors already for your buildings?
Oh, you want me to leak, don't you?
I don't want you to do necessarily if you, I didn't know if you had any possibilities before you bought.
Yeah, no, it's no, it's no big secret. So the, the way that, the, the way that we looked at it, it all started with a single tenant that was calling me incessantly wanting to be in. And I don't know if you remember, you probably do, you guys live here, but the next up, next to the Aldi, there was a vacant space, didn't even, didn't even have any storefront in it. So when we bought it, we, we made, put storefront in there, and that's where Yetzers is now. And there was another tenant that's a dollar-type store, Five Below, that was banging on us to go in that location, and, and Yetzers was just better for us at the time, so on and so forth. But the, the guy hasn't lost my phone number, and has called and called and called and called and called and called. And one of the reasons is, I know you know that you have a very high-value Walmart across the street, but that's like a $110 million Walmart, which is a big, which is a very big Walmart. We own 60 shopping centers that are shadows to Walmart, so we have a lot of experience in that business. And candidly, it's one of the reasons we bought this one, because it was so close to the Walmart. It's an excellent, excellent Walmart. The heads of development for Five Below came from where? Walmart. So they know how wonderful that Walmart is. They want to be on 12th. There's nowhere really else for them to go. And this is an inferior site because it's, you know, it's back up, it's hidden, it doesn't have any street frontage, and that's why the signage is so important. But anyway, that was the impetus was Five Below. They're still interested. We're having conversations with them. But since we're doing a global planning concept, I didn't want to be, you know, pitching just that. You know, we wanted the ability that if we did have multi-tenants that were interested, we could go that route also. All my eggs weren't in the, in the one basket. But it is just to be candid, it's, it's very challenging because it's not right on the street to get a lot of, you know, your local tenants that are willing to, to go back and, and not, not, they're sort of pioneering back there, if you will, but Four or Five Below feels very comfortable in their, their destination component where they have no problem with being in that location, so. It'll be one of, one or, or though, but Five Below was the one. Thank you. No secrets. Anyway, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Way this'll work is that we'll open the public hearing. We'll ask anyone, excuse me, who wishes to speak to this application, step up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once we have heard from all parties, both here and if anybody's online, we will close the public hearing. It'll then come back for further discussion and the decision by the planning commission. So with that, we will open the public hearing at 7:38 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application?
One at a time.
One at a time. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Holly Hollencamp, and my address is 843 Second Avenue Southwest. I, for, for the meeting a couple of weeks ago, was my neighbor, or our, our neighbor, I guess, collectively kind of came to represent kind of all of us and our concerns. And I guess, and obviously, it's, you know, it'd be developed, and I think, and that's gonna happen, but traffic is just such a terrible issue in our neighborhood. This will add to it, and I guess it, it's, and I know you said, you're addressing the green space issue, but when you said, you know, you look into signage and what are, what are our guarantees that there will be any change in signage, but, you know, those types of things. Also, to the entrance to our neighborhood, we, when changes were made, we no longer have a dead-end sign, even though we are a dead-end. And I'd really like assurances that some of those changes will be, I guess, that they'll be looked into and they'll be seriously considered, not just off comments that, you know, they'll be looked into. We have a real issue with traffic coming off of 61 and trying to cut through, and it sometimes, and with, in the alley behind, I mean, or the, not the alley, but I guess behind the businesses, and I understand that's private property, and that's one thing where that is safety, but there are real issues in my neighborhood that have developed over these years with the changes done into Broadway with the, just, it's changed it completely. And I've lived there for 25 years, so I, I don't know why we don't have a dead-end sign there. I guess it's a, it's one of our biggest concerns, I guess, for our neighborhood. Because it seems like we haven't addressed a lot of the other things.
I don't interrupt usually on public, but you had a dead-end sign at the end of your cul-de-sac?
We did, we did, and we, we did contact and tried to go through getting it. And I've, we've, we didn't have any, we didn't have any signage, and, but when we got new signs and that was taken, it was taken out, we have a no, how, it's a three-way, and if you're...
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I've been back here.
It's a three-way, and we have a no-outlet sign on the south side of our street, which is, it just seems to be irrelevant. So on our actual, there's no dead-end sign on our actual stop sign. So I think that would make a huge difference. And I guess signage, obviously, for the private road is also, I think, a really big concern for our neighborhood, so I think that's, that's, I guess, all I have to say, so thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish?
Hello? My name is Jamie Deitchman. I live at 56 Seventh Street Northwest, just north of Broadway. Mr. Roberts, are you in control of the screen?
Yes.
Could you bring up the parcel map again, please? I just have two recommendations. Traffic's also my concern.
This one?
Do you have the one that shows the topography? Obviously, and Walmart is not your fault, but I try, I go to Aldi twice a week. I use your shopping center often. I also use the entrance near Northern Tool because that's very close to my house, and because I'm trying to avoid making a left turn while I'm on 12th into the plaza. My recommendations here would be that instead of relying on just signage to keep people doing the right thing, if the developer would be willing to maybe give a little bit of land along Third to add a turn lane on Third Street to make it more enticing for people to use an entrance on the south part of the property, instead of trying to make that left turn on 12th. A little more carrot, a little less stick. I think that would help a lot. It certainly couldn't hurt. But then, my second recommendation would be if we're gonna see more out-of-town customers, because a Five Below is gonna draw people from outside of our town. If it was just a Subway or a Verizon store like's already there, we'd see local business. But a Five Below, I don't think there's another one for at least 10 miles.
Still water?
I'm sorry?
Still water.
Yeah, so we'd probably see quite a bit more business. As a stopgap until 12th Street's able to be redeveloped, it might be time with this development or with this addition to put a curb or median onto 12th and prevent left turns from 12th into the property when they're going south, and to prevent people leaving this property and leaving Walmart from making a left turn where there's no light, there's no roundabout, there's no traffic control at all. It's hairy as it is. I'm not gonna say it's super dangerous, but if we start adding 50, 100 cars in our rush hours, it certainly will get there. And those are my two recommendations and, or anything along those lines, but most importantly, a better entrance close to the traffic control of the Third Street traffic signal, I think, would really make a big difference, and it wouldn't cost us much of anything. We'd just have to pave another eight feet where there's currently a sidewalk and then rebuild the sidewalk on Third, assuming there's no utilities running underneath that sidewalk as it is. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application? Do we have anyone online who wishes to speak?
No, sir.
I'll ask one last time. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Hearing no one online and no one coming forward, we will close the public hearing at 7:44 PM. Commissioners, discussion, motions? Susan?
We need to do this as A and B separately, correct?
Correct. We'll need two motions.
Okay. I'm going to move approval of the staff recommendation as written to recommend to the City Council approval of the planned unit development for Westlake Shopping Center. And as I said, as written, without the changes discussed by staff this evening.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair, for clarity, I was referring to item three of changes. I just...
Yeah, so let's, so what are you looking for there, Commissioner Young?
What I am looking...
Different than what Ken stated?
What Ken was going to change it to for a total of 15 feet. And what I am looking for is with a 15-foot-wide public utility drainage roadway in addition to what is, what is there. So instead of five feet, which the, which would be part of the PUD, they would be providing 10 feet, because the five feet's already there.
This just states, to me, this state, it's, reads to me that it's 15 total. Require divided with a 15-foot.
See, this is, is to provide the city, and so that means that it's in addition to what's already there. If you're going to provide something, you're giving something, you're in addition to what is already there.
Well, 10 feet is existing.
Yeah, what, right. What I'm, what I'm looking for is, we know we're gonna need easement. And what we've learned before is that if, if we do not look ahead for our easement needs, when something is going to be developed, we know we're gonna need the additional right-of-way. We know that we're going to need good, very good pedestrian access along this, which quite frankly would be to the benefit of the shopping center and to the city. The time to get the easement is now, not the way that we did it on Broadway and on the baggage road on Broadway.
I hear what you're saying.
PUDs are essentially, we give a little, they give a little. What I'm asking for is their give is the easement.
The question I have on that is, I can't see on this map that you have up here, how much parking do they lose when that happens? They lose an entire row of parking if I under, as I recall this site. That's a lot of parking.
Well, and, and like the gentleman in the back, I'm there on a pretty frequent basis, and that 10 feet of parking is basically raceway. It, I, I'm there on a very regular basis, and even on the biggest Aldi sales day, I have never seen the entire last third of the parking lot toward 12th parked in, except for the occasional RV. Well, I mean, when Walmart's full, they come on over.
All right. We have a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair, if I can just add a couple of clarifying comments. There is an existing 10-foot-wide easement along both streets. The intent of the way it was written, and I apologize if it wasn't clear, was for a total of 15 feet, not an additional 15 feet to make 25. It was really another five feet added on, on both street sides.
And if I might, Chair, members of the commission, we did discuss internally the acquisition of additional right-of-way through here. We did vet that out through legal. The question that usually comes up is whether or not that there's a reasonable proportion nexus to asking for that much additional right-of-way for this request. I understand that PUDs, we do expect that there is some public benefit. The 10-foot is drainage and utility. It does not even cover the sidewalks that are on the property right now, so any additional right there would be that additional five feet for those drainage utility, the roadway, and then also the, the sidewalks. I do understand where you are coming from, Commissioner Young. I just do think that, that might have some unintended consequences for the city if we do pursue additional right-of-way in above the 15. if we do pursue additional right-of-way in above the fifteen feet.
Explain unintended consequences, please?
Um given the fact that we don't actually have an active uh street reconstruction project, we don't have final plans, um the question of whether or not acquiring that additional right-of-way now is, if there's really a, I don't wanna say tit-for-tat, but that's just what is coming to mind, a fair, um you know, the developments ask for the P U D for the public ask of the right-of-way.
I would submit that in our twenty-year plan, we are, we know that we're going to need additional work on Twelfth. I would also submit that the city has made a strong commitment to a walkable and improving the sidewalks for public safety. And in the court of reasonableness, this is not unreasonable. I'd be willing to compromise down to an additional ten, but we're going to need it. And and if, if a developer wishes something, they don't have to do any park. Right? So, so the city isn't receiving significant benefits from the P U D process. I made the motion, it will stand or it will fall.
Any further comments? Hearing none? Call a question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion does not carry, fails at a one to three vote. Do we have a second motion?
I would make a motion to recommend to the City Council approval of the preliminary plat for Westlake Shopping Center located at one nineteen, two oh nine, two eighty-nine, Twelfth Street, with the six conditions as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, sir.
You had a motion and a second discussion? Good answer, Susan.
You needed a change in the conditions from what was written.
Thank you, I was just gonna ask. That was, Susan's motion was the same. Motion with no, or as proposed language with no changes. Commissioner Miller, did you want to have the changes that I outlined or not?
In its conditions. I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding, because I'm just reading what it says.
Right.
The fifteen feet that you have in there isn't the total fifteen feet, that's an additional fifteen feet?
Mr. Chair, if I may. The, the intent was to have a total of up to fifteen feet. And it would cover well the, the green areas, landscape areas along the two streets. So I, I tweaked the language to say public utility drains roadway pedestrian easements up to fifteen feet with over the existing landscape boulevards, just on both street sides.
Yes, I guess my motion would have included the changes you suggested. Thank you.
And I'll verify my second of the motion at that standing.
So I have a motion and a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one.
Pay me now or pay me later?
Chair is looking for a discussion or a motion on our second item, which is approved resolution zero-one dash two-four dash two-four dash zero-one.
I will continue with my motions then for item B. The recommend, um Planning Commission approve the resolution zero-one, two-four, two-four, zero-one. This approval will be subject to the following conditions as proposed by staff, which include twenty-six condition and amendments.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion with the twenty-six conditions.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. So the resolution, we are the final, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
But uh we are just recommending to the City Council, and so they will uh make or break the final decision. And they will go before them.
Uh we're scheduled now for April twenty-sixth with the City Council. Excuse me, February twenty-sixth, April?
That's looking like a lot better date than thinking, wow, what happened a couple months here?
It feels like April, maybe? I, I need ice.
February twenty-sixth.
I need ice for that plunge.
Good luck on your project. Thank you for coming and providing your comments tonight. I'm sure there were notes made by the staff.
Yes, many.
We have moved to our staff updates. Before we get to the staff updates, I have a, uh one announcement to make. You notice Justin is not here this evening. Justin has uh resigned his position on the Planning Commission. So I wanna publicly thank him for his time, his effort, and his years of service on the Planning Commission. A big reason, as you know, he is very uh involved in the historical, Forest Lake historical, as well as uh Schoolhouse being uh rebuilt down in Hugo there. And it's just taken a lot of his time. I'm sure his three young children also take a lot of his time. So I wanna thank him again and uh for his service. But that does make us two people shy, which um we all got the email today, can we make it tonight? So it'll be a little tight till we get some more people um involved. So with that, um.
Encourage your friends and relatives.
We have a councilperson, Roberts here. Do you have anything you'd like to add to tonight's meeting?
Just wanna continue to thank you for your, your work on this. You guys get into the dirty, nitty-gritty stuff. That's not always fun, but we appreciate that when coming forward to, to council. And I would also like to thank Justin for his time uh on the Planning Commission. He's done a really nice job over the, over the years and, and will obviously continue to give back with the Historical Society, which is, which is great. As, as you probably all know, we did make a change uh with our city administrator. I think it's a positive change. It's gonna be better for staff, it's gonna be better for the city, and better for development. So we welcome that and um welcome Christina as our new intern and uh potentially long-term. And any feedback on that as time goes on would be, would be welcomed as well. So otherwise, thanks and have a great evening.
Councilmember Roberts, I have a.
Yes, any questions?
Oh, you don't get just.
Yeah, sorry, I should've.
You don't get the bail.
I, I would like to encourage you, since you were here and heard the discussion that Ms., Ms. Young had with uh about the, the traffic and the easement. You know, my hesitation was, I don't wanna get the city into, involve any uh extra litigation if at all possible. But I hundred percent agree with her that we need more footage there as you guys decide whether you're gonna go forward with that or not in order to accommodate what we need to do for sidewalks and right-aways and things like that. So I hope you consider that as you guys go through for final approval.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that feedback and also, Susan, your, your thoughts on that. I, I'm, you know, I tend to agree with the litigation part. I think that we do, in this specific case, have some pretty good partners that would probably be willing, as we get to that point, be able to work with us on that. But yes, Twelfth is, needs to happen and it's only gonna get busier. And to your point about all the apartments down in the south, coming north, I mean, it's, that, that pedestrian easement is, is important. So thank you for pushing that, Susan, a little bit. But you know, I, I think that the idea was the right idea, but the, the approval was the right thing to do. And they seem to be like good partners to be able to work with to, to allow that.
Perhaps you can find a compromise?
Yes.
Because P U D's, the whole, the whole idea behind a P U D, as opposed to strict variances, is that the city gets something.
Right, right.
And we're not really getting what we will need in the future. And Blake, I think you remember how much we spent on Broadway.
Mm-hmm, right, absolutely. Any other questions?
Councilmember, I am gonna ask Abby to talk to the Planning Commission about the dollars, the new state dollars, respected housing. And I'm hoping that, that as you go, work with those, that you're gonna involve the Planning Commission. But I don't know if you wanna do that or she wants to do that.
That would make sense, that makes a lot of sense. You're talking about the dollars that we, that was discussed at the last.
Housing.
Yeah, council meeting, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Um and then one other thing too is, you know, to, as far as filling these positions, Abby had reached out to myself and, and Commissioner, or Chair Gerard is, is when, you know, Justin did resign. And so we'll be working fairly hard here to try to fill these, these other positions. And I, I should know this, but I don't see Geneva's, uh is she just gone today or did she?
No, we actually have two vacancies with Justin and Geneva.
Okay.
Just to add into the conversation, we do have four or five applicants interested in serving on Planning Commission. And so we just need to get those scheduled. The council did kinda look at adopting a little bit of a different process this year, where Chair Gerard and Councilmember Roberts would actually be a part of that interview process and make recommendations, thinking that those two bodies, the chair of a commission and the council liaison, probably have a little bit more knowledge base of what's needed and the skills to make that recommendation to the council then. So um just with some of our staffing shortages, we haven't been able to get those uh scheduled, but we're hoping to get them scheduled within the next few weeks. And maybe even your second meeting in February, we'll be back to a full body. Don't quote me on that. I did get guidance from our attorney that now that we do only have five active members, a quorum is three, as per the Attorney General's recommendations. So we, you know, even though we were a little worried tonight, uh or today, we just, um we are actively working on it, but if we only ended up with three, we just still had a quorum, so.
So I, I guess I wasn't aware that Geneva had resigned, but uh thank, thank her for her service as well, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
So Abby, as long as you've started, anything else you'd like to add?
Oh, I have quite a bit of things. So as uh Blake had mentioned, we had a recent change. We do have an interim city administrator, Christina Hand. She wanted to let you know that she was unable to make it tonight. She's still adjusting some to this new schedule of hers. She does intend to come and introduce herself, but also makes her door open, her email and phone. You're welcome to reach out to her if you wanted to chat with her or set up a time to meet her individually. We chatted a little bit about the vacancies. I did wanna let, um so I won't touch it, that was on one of my notes here. I did wanna let all commissioners know there is a public open house Tuesday, February sixth, from four-thirty to six-thirty, that's here at City Hall. And that is on the Eleventh Avenue Southwest, County Road thirty-two, or some would call it two-hundred-and-twenty Streets, two-hundred-and-twentieth Street North. I guess there might have even been like an eighty-seven in there somewhere. I don't know how many road names it has. That is a county-led project for a full reconstruction of that road and addition of pedestrian improvements. There is even discussion about realignment of Forest Road and how it intersects with that roadway. So I would encourage all of you to attend, um let your friends and neighbors know if, about it as well. That project does run from about Highway sixty-one to the overpass. So it's a pretty significant project and does affect quite a, quite a bit of the community, as I think we all tend to use Eleventh Avenue as a way to get around the community. I did also wanna let you know, Ken and I are meeting with the Met Council later this week to talk with them about the potential for a city-initiated comp plan amendment. I think I've mentioned maybe briefly last fall that we started to see discrepancies between the data the city has in their comp plan and the data the Met Council has in their comp plan. And we really need to make sure that our, all of our data is up to date with the Met Council's. So more than anything, it would be a cleanup of our comp plan to ensure that it's consistent. But also there may be opportunity to take a look at a couple other items. I'll come back and talk with you more about this after we've kind of worked through these discrepancies with the Metropolitan Council, yes?
They had to approve all the data when we did the plan.
Yes.
So the discrepancy is in the projections?
What ended up happening is that um there have been, so the comp plan was approved in, I don't remember the.
Twenty.
Yeah, I think it might have been the year before.
Twenty-one.
But there was a couple amendments since then. They were landowner-initiated, they're private amendments. We also amended Headwaters one-twenty-three. What ended up happening is in there is, um one of the amendments only affect, I have to remember this right, forgive me, because there's a lot of tables in the comp plan and you tweak one number and the other ones don't, you know, if you don't tweak them all, or you, it can get a little cl- cluster-y. My understanding is that when one of those amendments went through, there was a discrepancy between the, what the city had had at the time for our projected low-to-medium-density residential development area and what the Met Council had. But the, the amendment didn't affect, affect that? Forgive me, this is how a little confusing I am in this all. And so when the amendment went through our data, the, the Met Council didn't take a look at that category because it wasn't being affected, but at the same time, it ended up getting amended. And forgive me, I don't have it all right in front of me. But we're going to meet to verify whether, how do we rectify this situation? We're really hoping it's administrative approval, that it's a small submission to them, obviously through our channels, that we just start with a new established baseline. Neither Ken nor I were here at that time, and we wanna make sure that we have the most accurate data. Does help us um in that we've had a number of multifamily residential developments that have come in. And so we would actually create our baseline from twenty-twenty-four, so starting, going forward. So then that way we've accounted at least for all the development that's already happened in terms of our density calculations.
But that won't be the new base for an additional same number of high density, because we have already
Yes.
pretty much done all of our high density for the comp plan period.
What we would do if we do need to do this amendment is that we would account for all the high density that we have put in since we approved the last, you know, adopted our comp plan and amended it, that, that we'd factor that calculation in as well, so that our numbers are twenty-twenty-four numbers, that they're not the twenty-eighteen, nineteen, whenever we adopted the plan. I'll bring more back for you, but I just wanna let you know that we're in this ongoing discussion with the Met Council, because we do, we are just having some troubles in working through some of those numbers with the Met Council. As of right now, we believe that we'll have two meetings in February, but don't be surprised if one of them gets canceled. Ken and I are fielding development inquiries for spring application submissions. They aren't as thick as they were last year. I think last year this time, we were already fielding quite a number of, of things. We're hopeful that that's just because of wacky weather we have. But we are starting to see some inquiries coming in. And then lastly, as I updated the City Council, the metropolitan, or the, the state adopted a new metropolitan-wide housing or tax this year that ends up going for affordable housing. The state will provide direct tax revenues to counties and cities of a certain size for local affordable housing aid. Forest Lake is projected for the next four years to get between two-hundred-and-twenty-five, I think, up to maybe three, a little over three, I don't remember exactly that, that number, each year for the next four years. It could be perpetual, depending on the legislature's decisions with the funding sources and allocation of funding beyond those four years. There's very specific items in which the city could utilize those monies for. We can provide direct assistance for certain different types of projects. We can also partner and give our money to people that are already in this arena. And we can put the money into, if we had one, a local housing trust fund for use at a later time. We just briefed the council at their last meeting on the twenty-twenty-four funding. It'll come in two installments, one in July, one in December. And we have three years from the date of dispersment to spend it. If you transfer it to a local housing trust fund, it's considered spent. So, we could, in theory, create a trust fund, put the money in there, and wait for a project to come along in a few years. Right now, our best bet is to really just take a look at the funding sources, the programs, what are the partners, what are the housing goals in our comp plan, before coming back and having discussions with appointed and elected officials. It had been my hope that I would have already had that prepared, but it is my hope that we will have those discussions before our first dispersment, no later than, than that July, to start us down that road of what are we gonna do with these funds? Part of those conversations will be the discussion of whether or not we want to empower our EDA to also become an HRA, that's a housing redevelopment. Our current EDA doesn't have those housing redevelopment authority powers, to help be at least a body to help in this process. But all of that will be lined out with guidance from the state, the county CDA, legal council as we move forward. That is what Councilmember Roberts had asked me to, or Commissioner Young had asked me to brief you on. Do you have questions, Susan?
Yeah.
Or other commissioners, I didn't mean every.
I heard one of your options that you discussed Monday night, and, and I'm, I'm really concerned about that, but I'm glad to hear that, that you're not really pushing forward with any options yet.
No.
I did go back and look at the Washington County housing and what their strategic plan and what that says, and I think that there's some really good opportunities, because you said you were working with them, and what their, what their strategies are, especially their, the ones that they've made, their high priority strategies. And then I made the absolute mistake of going back into our comp plan and noticing that the very first strategy that we have under housing is to develop a housing maintenance code that has been discussed for years and years and years. I, I really hope that we will concentrate on, on affordable housing that is less than eighty percent of AMI, because then I also, I had time tonight, I actually got home from work on a, on a normal time, and, you know, we, our teacher salaries, starting teachers are thirty-four to forty-two thousand a year, a police officer entry, entry level is forty-three. We want those people to live in this community. And if we, if we say that there is a gap in our eighty percent to one-hundred-and-ten percent AMI, and that they need the support, I am less supportive, I am less supportive of that than really working to have the folks that are working in our restaurants, working in our hospitals, working in our, not the top doctors, the, the people that are providing care, working in our schools. I, I want those folks to live in our community.
Sure. What Susan's referring to is, one of the things that I identified for the council in our early analysis of the funding and existing programs that are out there, is that there are, programs exist for people who make eighty percent of the AMI, or households that make eighty percent of the area median income AMI, and less. So, there's, there are programs that exist already. There's a gap in services and programs for those making eighty to one-hundred-and-ten percent of the AMI, and so, and we will get into, as we go through those discussions, what our AMI is, what is thirty percent, what is fifty, what is eighty, what is one-hundred-and-ten? The fund, the, the LAHA, L-A-H-A, Local Affordable Housing Assistance, LAHA. I don't mean to do that, but now I can't get it out of my head, and I'm really sorry because you're not.
You're wormed.
Probably be able to get it out of your head. The LAHA funds allow us to utilize for projects up to one-hundred-and-ten percent. And so, that is just one area that I've said, there is a gap because there are no programs right now. So, if you make money, but not a hundred percent, but you're like falling between that eighty and a hundred, there's no programs essentially, or very minimal programs to help you. And so, that is a, an area that I identified for the council as an area that I would encourage we at least explore. Hearing what you said, Susan, we definitely will do quite a bit of data pulling in terms of the, you know, just housing affordability in our community as best as we can with the data we have, as well as area median incomes. I agree with you in that, yes, we, the people who work here need to live here, and if we have lower-paid, less-than-living-wage jobs, we want to definitely support people who are renting or owning those homes. But we also want to be able, in my mind, is that we want to be able to offer things that maybe aren't being offered to some populations as well, so. There's, there's, I think, a, a good opportunity here we have for a conversation, it's just we're not there quite yet.
And for y'all, our household AMI is ninety, almost ninety-two thou, ninety-one thousand, and one-hundred-and-ten percent would be over a hundred thousand, and I just, I'm not sure that we need to provide assistance in that situation. I would rather think about the assistance to, we don't have good transit in this community, and, and I really would like to have more folks be able to live here, that work here.
Abby, anything else?
That is all that I have, unless there's any questions from anybody in the council.
Any other questions for Abby?
We had some developments that we gave some variances to that haven't broken ground yet. Do they have a time?
Developments for variances?
A couple, a manufacturing facility, I'm thinking.
Oh, Norhart.
Yeah. I thought that they had a time limit by which they had to start.
I can look back into that.
That may be an error.
Our code is kind of funky depending on what their approvals were, what kind of asks they made, but we can go back and we can take a look at that, and I can provide you with an update at your next meeting. Was it, Norhart?
That's, that's the big one, but then there were a couple of subdivisions, too, that we have to approve them right now, we have to approve them right now.
The only subdivision that we have approved to final plat is Hidden Creek, since I've been here. We had a few minor subdivisions that had gone through, but the only major subdivision, there have been some preliminary plats, preliminary plats are usually valid for at least a year, if not two, I'd have to just double-check on those as well. But we can look into that, I can provide you with an update at your next meeting.
Ken, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Kevin?
Nope, I'm good.
Susan?
Rotary plunge is on the seventeenth. We will have a plunge, maybe, it may be a pool, it hopefully is a lake, it may be something else, but we have, we have really good, we have a good set of teams, and Blake is one of the original plunge masters. It's still going strong, sir, thank you.
Well, sir. I have nothing, so based on that, once again, though, just thanking Justin for his time.
Absolutely.
And we'll try to get some people on here sooner than later. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll take the second, since we've all tied.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-debatable motion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all for your time.